Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well run.
Good morning. Let's get started on our Tuesday, August 8th Election Day Legislative and Human Resources Committee. Do we have public comment for today? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve July 11th minutes?
Move it.
Support by Commissioner Vaughn. Support by Commissioner Stick. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item three, legislative update from Becky Beckler, Legislative PA.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's nice to be with you all this morning. The legislature has not been in session since July 16th. So it's been rather quiet here in Lansing, which is, to most people, is a good thing. When they met in July, there were a couple of key items that they put their final stamp on. One was the budget did get approved. It's been signed with the governor. And so implementation of that budget began for an October 1 start. They also did the teacher retirement changes, and that has also been signed by the governor, as well as a key proposal that the governor had wanted, referring to Good Jobs. And that was, if you've been noticing in the paper, that was the governor and the administration's desperately seeking Foxconn out dealing with what we thought was going to be dealing with phones. However, it kind of looks like it's changed direction in dealing with automobiles and self-driving automobiles and how that might impact the big three on that. I believe the governor is still over in China and working with that. But that is why the Good Jobs package was implemented, was in hopes that that would incentivize the company to come to Michigan. They've already announced that they will be going to Wisconsin. And I believe they're also looking at California, but Michigan is definitely still in play. So according to their own television and media, they're seen to be talking about Michigan. So it looks like we're at least good for an attractive situation. It looks like it's going to be in the Wayne County area, down by Detroit, in the Romulus area. However, we'll keep you posted on that. But that was the incentive on the Good Jobs package, was trying to capture that audience and make us as competitive as they could be. When it comes to the budget, we're still watching two key items that were important to the county. One was some boilerplate in the Health and Human Services budget dealing with Section 298. We believe that the department will name a facilitator this week, and that facilitator, once it's named, then can begin to implement the details of that boilerplate section. If you recall, the specific language that talked about a pilot project for Kent County, and so that's something that we need to continue to meet with both the facilitator as well as the department and our key legislative leaders to make sure that we can have full implementation of that pilot project. The second piece that we were watching was the pathways to progress. The governor was successfully getting additional slots for that. Again, it's not till an October 1 implementation date, but we will be meeting with the department specialist, her name is Beth Nagel, to try to make sure that Kent County is in the best possible position to secure some spots for Kent County. So while we're working with Wayman and Matthew to see how we can best position the county board to capture some of those positions. As we look forward to the fall agenda, there are about 35 session days that are scheduled to meet between, they meet one day in August, August 16th, and then September, October, November is about 34 days. There are a couple of key issues that both chambers are looking at. Clearly auto no-fault continues to be a priority of the Speaker of the House, Tom Leonard. He and his insurance chair, Representative Lana Teis, continue trying to find that solution where they can capture enough votes for passage. Speaker Leonard has been also in some intense dialogue with Mayor Mike Duggan, trying to find a bipartisan solution to auto no-fault. I've continued to report that auto no-fault is a priority, and they still struggle to get the necessary votes to make significant changes in the direction that they seek. But I put that on the table because it is still a major priority of the Speaker of the House. I'm not sure it's the same priority level for the Senate Majority Leader. His priority appears to be the opportunity to eliminate prevailing wage. It's something, if you recall, that interest groups have tried to gather the necessary signatures. They failed on a couple of counts. They've had some poor organization. They just haven't been able to get those signatures. So the legislature is looking actually for them to put it on the ballot. So it would be a ballot initiative spearheaded by this legislature. One of the things that Public Affairs Associates is preparing for our clients, and we hope to have that ready for you beginning September, is a review of all the potential ballot initiatives that could come out 2018. They are gathering quite a few. I think we're up to about 12 or 14. So we are putting that together, and we should have it for you in the next two or three weeks so you can take a look at all of the potential ballot initiatives for Michigan as we look to 2018. But that's something that is, something that the Senate appears to want to try to tackle is prevailing wage. In the House, there is a task force currently underway, referring to Michigan Cares: Community Access, Resources, Education, and Safety. It's been a priority of the Speaker of the House, dealing with mental illness as it relates to, that are in prison, and making sure that those individuals have access to care, education, as they're going through the process. The report is due shortly, I think when they get back in September. And then we anticipate that there'll be some legislative initiatives that will follow that. But that's clearly a priority of the House, so we can see that moving through this fall as well. Workforce development continues to be a priority of the House. They have a Workforce Development Committee. They don't have anything specific that they're looking at, however, that's been historically a very act for the House, and we anticipate that that will continue. The House has also introduced and moved on a few bills that we think they're still going to have focus on, and deals with gun, relaxing some of the gun regulations. They did pass a bill over to the Senate, permitless carry. They also want to allow, be allowed of guns in areas that are currently prohibited, such as hospitals, schools, airports. They would like to relax those current restrictions. The governor has adamantly opposed relaxing any type of gun as far as availability. So we'll watch that as that plays out between the House and the governor. But we do believe that that will also be an issue this fall. Local government pension, that task force, as you know, did get out some recommendations. Politically, that might be a bigger challenge. They're not sure that they could actually tackle anything significant, but they may be able to nibble around the edges, if you will, and try to do some of those reforms as it comes to some of our local governments that have some significant trials when it comes to their pension status. There's also something that's been boiling in the last two weeks dealing with a veto override. The legislature passed a legislation that speeds up the phasing out of sales tax on the difference for boats, cars, and I believe also RVs. And this would reduce it by 10 years, rather than a phase-in fully implemented in 2039, it would be 2029. It does have some significant costs to the state of Michigan. I believe Treasury indicated it cost up to $187 million. Therefore, the governor vetoed it. He didn't feel that looking, going, the state's budget could handle that kind of debt, given all the other issues that we have. The Senate is going to be meeting to discuss, do they try a override? It did pass both chambers significantly, so there would be a good possibility. That's kind of unprecedented for a Republican legislature to override their own governor's veto. However, it's the first time that it's getting a little, it's getting a lot of conversation. The Senate Majority Leader hasn't ruled it out. I don't believe the House has commented on their waiting for the Senate to see, since it's a Senate-originated legislation. But that's an interesting conversation. I think we shall see at least conversation about it. Senator Jack Brannenberg, who chairs the Senate Tax Committee, has indicated he's in support of it and would vote in support of it. So I think you're going to have some individuals within that caucus that will push the Senate Majority Leader to perhaps consider that. So just a little, it doesn't necessarily have specific implications to the county, but just interesting as to some of the issues that you might see this fall. That's really what I have right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I have.
Great update, Becky. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Becky today? Commissioner Vaughn?
Thank you, Chair. On the no-fault, what are the two main issues that they're looking at as far as no-fault?
You know, that's a very complicated process, and it depends on what, there are two different sides. As you can imagine, you have the hospital angle, and then you have the insurance angle. And dealing with what proposal, a lot deals with the extents of the, how much insurance you're going to require. From the Detroit aspect, to do something to eliminate the high cost of insurance in Detroit, the mayor had proposed de-insurance at one point, which did not get any traction from the House, or the Senate, or the Democrats. So at this point, they haven't really released any agenda as far as what they want to pursue. I could try to get for you the two different sides and give you a general assessment. But from the Speaker's office and Representative Lana Teis, they continue to work behind closed doors and have not really shared, they want to do a comprehensive, or they want to do something, I guess, a little bit more piecemeal, if you will, dealing with attendant care, and do they want to do something with the payment mechanism, if you will. So I guess I'm not yet able to answer that in a good detail.
They're always picking on the no-fault ever since I went and testified almost 10 years ago. And, you know, and I think it's part of term limits, that things just keep coming up and coming up because of the insurance industry or whatever, but...
It's a very complicated issue, and with the term limits, you have a brand-new representatives. They're still trying to educate them. But I think you probably have members sitting around this table that could offer a perspective of many different sides of the aisle as far as what issues...
So I need to talk to Dan next.
And Mandy.
Thank you, Becky.
I'm happy to fill you. Commissioner Cornick?
Thank you. Commissioner Vaughn, if you would look at what they had proposed in lame duck at the end of the last session, that's probably pretty close to what their starting point is right now and what they're talking about, because they had just about everyone agreeing on it except for the speaker at that time. So that would probably be the starting point. And then you can look at what the Senate had passed, and that's the whole enchilada, pretty much. And they're trying to come to some sort of an agreement in regards to all that. Who knows if it'll go this year, next year, whenever. Anyway...
But I will send, you know, that's a good point. I will send to you what the, I guess, the compromise version, if you will. I don't think everybody agreed it was a compromise, but there were some pieces of the puzzle, just so you have an idea of what some of the pieces of the puzzle that they're looking at. Again, the struggle is that even in lame duck session, they were unable to get enough votes to come down to an agreement. So that continues to be a struggle, is that you have members all over the place on auto no-fault reform.
And it's all about the House, too. It's not about the Senate. They already passed a bill last session that had everything listed that people were agreeable to. So it's a House issue and not a Senate issue, is what I've always been told. So anyway, I have a question in regards to the local government pension. What specifically is the state trying to do to address that? Are they going to eliminate them, or will they not step in if they go down? I mean, Kent County has done a phenomenal job with our pension, and I think it's a huge asset to attracting talent within the community to come and work for the county. So would it have any effect on very successful pensions, or all pensions, or what specifically are they looking to do, Becky?
I think the struggle for them is what can they do politically? And as they look at what they can do politically, there's very little, because it is a local issue. So according to the legislative staff with the Speaker's office, they truly believe that there's very little they can do because of the politics involved in it. And I think it's incumbent upon us to protect those counties that do an excellent job, so that anything that they do pass does not have negative implications upon a system that is successful and works well. But I think they understand that there are a few counties that do it very well, and so why are we punishing a few to those that aren't as successful? However, I'm not sure you're going to see anything happen on that. And if you do, it'll probably be something teetering around the edges, if you will.
So they're not going to eliminate?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Stick?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Becky.
Good morning.
A couple of items I wanted to follow up on. First, on the 298 boilerplate, the integration pilots. It is, it appears increasingly so that the private managed pilots may be held up until there's some resolution of their legality, or whether or not we need to have additional federal waivers. Do you have any insight as to what happens to our public pilot project if those are held up, that is, if the others are suspended until they can resolve that? Is everything suspended, or...
I don't think the department, quite frankly, has a good handle on that. In talking with them yesterday, they really have not done anything on the implementation piece, and they're waiting for this facilitator. I believe that they're going to rely very heavily on this individual to call it. So I think after this week, when we find out who that facilitator is and how they plan to do that, I think that's an excellent question that we should propose, probably through Representative Rehulon or Senator McGregor to ask what that status is. And I'd be happy to do that this week.
Who's going to be the facilitator?
They wouldn't tell me.
Okay. So, yeah, we should follow up on that, because I think that the timing is huge on when we begin to do that. The other question, there's been conversation about, at the House, about a new child custody statute. And as I've read that statute, it appears that it could have fairly significant increased demands on our judiciary, particularly the family law division. And if it passes, as I've read it currently, I can see the pressure for more judges wouldn't be that far behind. What's the status of that?
I believe that you'll probably see that move through the House. The Chair of the Senate-House Judiciary Committee, Representative Brunstad, wanted this committee, all purpose of dealing with child custody. And he comes from a very personal experience that he's had. So I think you'll probably see, probably a slowdown of that legislation when it comes over to the Senate, a more weighted approach to how they're going to look at that. But I think from the House, since that is its priority, it's the whole reason he's the committee chair, you'll probably see the House move that piece of legislation. But I think Senator Jones will probably slow down and take a bigger look at it. He is sensitive to judges and the response the judges may have to proposals, where I think on the House side, they come at it from a different perspective. But I will make sure that I'm correct on where Senator Jones is coming from on that issue, just to confirm.
And its application. I mean, I presume that if it's adopted, it applies to every existing custodial situation which could open the floodgates.
Absolutely. All right, any other questions for Becky today? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming today. Great report, per usual. All right, next to our agenda, item four, Public Works Darbas, five-minute update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for scheduling time for us this morning. The mission of the Department of Public Works is to foster collaborative and innovative solutions that deliver value to our stakeholders by managing discarded materials to conserve natural resources and promote a health and sustainable community. Our vision is to implement sustainable materials management strategies to reduce dependency on landfill. The department has seven values that have been adopted by the Board of Public Works. I'd like to share three of those with you this morning. Visitors, customers, and employees will receive prompt courteous services that exceed expectations. Community leadership, transparency, and private-public partnerships drive our business decisions. And we are committed to foster that embraces diversity, inclusion, and equity. We believe our unique differences enrich and empower the lives of all, and we work collaboratively to achieve these goals. The DPW has four facilities in its fleet, including the South Kent landfill, North Kent transfer facility, Waste-to-Energy Facility, and the Recycling and Education Center. 2016 marked another very busy year for the DPW. Number of highlights and accomplishments include the adoption of the 20-by-20, 90-by-vision to reduce waste going to landfills by 20% by 2020, and by 90% by 2030, and to bring private-public investment and the necessary infrastructure to achieve these goals. We launched the Reimagine Trash Campaign to bring focus to the increasing generation of trash in West Michigan, and strategies for change. Kent County is currently generating the equivalent of two Michigan stadiums of trash every year, or 1.8 million cubic yards of municipal solid waste. Waste generation in Kent County was up another 4% in 2016. Public Works represented the Michigan Association of Counties on the Michigan, excuse me, on the Department of Environmental Quality Solid Waste Sustainable Advisory Panel, and we are also one of eight nominated for the 2016 West Michigan Sustainable Business of the Year Award. On our operations side of the business, we successfully implemented the Solid Waste Management Ordinance on Holler Licensing. The surcharge generated $4 million in its first year. The department had projected 1.45, so we're very close in our projection, and we'll be distributing an annual report to the entire board here shortly. We also deployed new Paradigm County Waste Scale software in our finance department in our four facilities. Our Waste-to-Energy Facility continues to operate at capacity. We processed just north of 182,000 tons of refuse there, and we generated over 101 million watt-hours of electricity. That's the equivalent of serving 11,000 homes. We recovered 3,600 tons of scrap steel, and we continue to provide witness destruction of narcotics evidence and confidential documents for law enforcement agencies, just under 300,000 pounds last year, delivered by 78 local, state, and federal agencies. South Kent landfill received 312,000 tons of municipal solid waste and almost 42,000 tons of waste-to-energy combustion. We also generate 3.2 megawatts of electricity from landfill gas, or the equivalent of 3,000 homes served. The North Kent transfer facility on 10 Mile continues to see increased business. We were up 10% in 2016 over 2015. We handled just under 94,000 tons at that facility in 2016. We also continue to manage the closed legacy landfills. The most notable issue was finding methane migrating outside the Kentwood landfill. We brought together a multi-agency team, and along and with that team, we tested residences, we held town meetings, we sent letters to neighbors, and we also provided news releases. With that effort, we also went into an immediate design of a solution. And later this month, we'll be more than doubling the size of the well field out there to collect the methane gas and destroy it with a new flare system. We're also installing seven more monitoring wells at the Kentwood landfill. Last year, we did experience a propane cylinder explosion at the recycling center, and nearly a year later to the date, we experienced one again this year. And so all we like to do is remind everyone that propane cylinders are very problematic for the recycling center, and pose a real serious threat to us when they are put into the recycling bins. We provided 216 educational tours at the recycling center and at the South Kent landfill, and that involved the working individuals that participated in those tours. We also provided additional tours at our Waste-to-Energy Facility. In partnership with the Health Department, we were able to launch the Safe Sharps program. And in the first year, we were able to distribute over 1,000 Sharps containers to residences so they could safely and more appropriately dispose of their Sharps at home. At our recycling center, the Recycling Education Center on Wealthy, we processed nearly 35,000 tons of recyclables brought into the facility. That's brought in to 11 counties from across West Michigan. And we're operating at a 10% residual or trash rate, which is actually very good and exceeding the 14% to 15% national average. Our processing fee is currently at $35 a ton and will remain stable for 2018. I'd be remiss if I didn't speak to a fourth value for the department, and that is that our people are the most valuable resource and essential in delivering on our mission. There's roughly 60 of us that accomplish the work of the DPW. Can't say enough about the dedicated, hard-working group that I'm able to work alongside every day as we deliver services here in Kent County. Finally, we have a number of 2017 strategic goals that are noted in our 2016 report. I'd be happy to provide more information should you have questions. And if the Commissioners would like to tour any of our facilities, we're happy to make those arrangements for you through Pam and Karen. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
All right, thank you, Dar. Any questions for Dar today? Commissioner Vaughn?
Just a comment. Under Dar's leadership, we're probably moving at the fastest pace since I've been on the board, and I've been on there over a dozen years. And there's a lot of things happening in the trash business, and we talked trash, our last meeting lasted an hour and a half. And we accomplished a lot of things, and Dar's doing wonderful things, and they got a good crew over there. And like I said before, I know she didn't move as fast as it has under Dar's business and government leadership. So thank you, Dar.
Any other questions? Commissioner Stick?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning.
The 90-by-30, which is an aggressive goal, but a wonderful objective, are we, is Kent County kind of in the leadership on that, or is this where the rest of the state is going?
Actually, Kent County is taking the lead. I don't know of any other community in Michigan, and there's probably a half dozen nationally that are really pushing the envelope and kind of putting a stake in the ground and saying, "We're no longer going to use landfilling as the best option." And essentially, in Michigan, virtually the only option to manage waste. We've been very engaged with the likes of The Right Place and others, and we're invited to speak nationally on the topic. And it is very aggressive, but it's a stretch goal, and I think the only way that we're going to garner support with our business leaders, our municipal leaders, all of you and everyone else that's involved in this conversation, is to begin to establish true goals and then strategies. One of the things that the Board of Public Works approved last week that Chair Vaughn mentioned was that we just adopted, well, we adopted last year, and we're going into a master plan process. We have our consultant to envision what the 200 acres south of the South Kent landfill that was purchased for the intent of constructing additional landfill space, but instead of putting processing capacity out there, whether it's composting, wood waste, construction, demolition, and buring. So in the next year, we're going to be able to provide you a better idea, a picture, if you will, of what those facilities and what that property could be used for. We're heavily engaged with The Right Place. We're engaged with Door Township. We've talked to Byron Township. We've met with the Elegance County Solid Waste Planning Committee. And so we continue to have conversations and begin to continue to share our vision in this area.
To what extent do we need to manage or restrict what goes into the trash in order to get to the 90?
Well, that's always a double-edged sword. In one regard, it would make it very easy if we could put in requirements of what should or shouldn't go into the trash, or better, what should be recycled and diverted. Kent County, as good as we're doing, we have a long ways to go. Our recycling rate is probably hovering somewhere around 20% residentially estimated. Realistically, I've pushed our staff that by 2022, we're going to be at 75% participation. Not quite sure how we get there yet, but it's a stretch goal, because the reality is we could be doing a lot better. And so we're actually studying and engaging the community and... And so, we're actually studying and engaging the community and having dialogue to understand better, why don't they participate in curbside? Is it a, we don't understand how to use it, we're not confident in knowing where to get that service, we don't have access, or we have a difficult time paying for that service. So, we're trying to better understand that and not as, that what we knew 20 years ago, because our communities have changed so much and there's been so much growth in Kent County, that we automatically say, "Well, this is why we think there's a problem." On the business side, we're working extensively with the West Michigan Sustainable Business Forum, The Right Place, and others, because we really see a need to educate and engage the private sector and these smaller businesses that don't have the same resources, environmental staff on board, so they can audit and better understand, how do we begin to divert?
It occurs to me, though, in, one of the things that's going on in our economy is more and more Amazon, and everything that's shipped, which means you have that much more, I mean, I said at the end of the day, when something comes in, there's this little thing that we have, and there's this huge pile of trash. That's a dynamic that is bigger than Kent County, but it has to be adding to that flow of stuff that we have to manage as it comes in, and significantly so.
Sure. If you had a chance to read the front page of my biz yesterday, Kent County DPW was activated, and we had a chance to engage that very topic. There's not really any more OCC or old corrugated cardboard in the stream, just that retailers are creating less, but homeowners, residences through online shopping are creating more. The Board of Public Works, with their visioning and with staff guidance last year, approved the purchase and installation of an OCC screen, a corrugated screen, for that very reason. When our recycling plant was built some seven years ago, and actually, the stream of recyclables a couple of years before that, the plant was built around what was the reality then, which was a lot more newspaper and other things. Well, things, times have changed, right? Very few of us read a paper newspaper anymore, and so many more of us shop online. So, we're actually installing equipment and adjusting to the new stream of material coming to us, which involves a lot of corrugated cardboard.
One other question, and that on the performance of the new ordinance over the last year, there's going to be a report. When is it coming out?
We are currently printing it, so we should have it in just a couple of days, and we'll distribute it to the administrator's office so that all the board members receive it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dar? I just want to say thank you so much, and this is kind of a Lisa-Dar question, but every time I put something into my recycling bin, sometimes I question, "Oh, is it supposed to go in there or not?" Maybe we could get kind of a quarterly Facebook of items that could go in and out, just as to start the communication with residents, because I have people in my neighborhood ask all the time. So, just, you know, we have some pretty lofty goals, and I hope that we can get there, but I think communication is probably going to be key to that, and Facebook is free, so let's, maybe we could start there. But, thank you so much. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
All right. Onto item five, Veteran Services. Carrie Anderson, please come up.
Good morning. Before I get started, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Kent County Boarders and the Kent County Administration for providing the type of leadership that enables us as a department to provide what I feel is the best model of service provision to veterans in the state. As my, in my position as President of Michigan Association of County Veteran Counselors, I'm privy to hear and learn about some of the decisions that other county boards of commissioners and administrators make in terms of service provision or providing services to their veterans, so thank you for what you do. I'll start with our strategic goals. Our first strategic goal is to ensure that every veteran in Kent County who is entitled to federal, state, or local veterans' benefits is aware of what they have earned and is receiving their benefits. So, one of the ways we measure this is by, is how we increase our awareness, and we count our face-to-face contacts with our veterans. So, by the end of 2016, we met face-to-face with 2,888 veterans, which was just a slight increase over what we served in 2015. But where we really saw a significant increase was our phone contacts. By the end of 2016, we had 52,362 phone contacts compared to 45,106 phone contacts in 2015. So, that was a 16% increase in the number of phone calls that we intercepted from veterans in the community. By the end of 2016, we filed 683 claims for compensation and pension benefits compared to the 469 claims that we filed in 2015, representing a 45% increase. So, really a significant increase in the number of benefit claims that we're filing. At the end of 2016, our compensation and pension claims that we filed brought in $4,874,935. Our market penetration went from a 10% up to 12.43%, not as high as I had anticipated, but still in the upward growth. We awarded $335,821 in soldiers' relief funds, $32,395 in our burial funds, and $23,364 in scholarship funds. So, that was a net total of $5,266,500 in 2016 to Kent County veterans. So, if you look at the overall numbers, for every dollar that we spent, we brought back $5 to the veterans and their families in this community. Another of our strategic goals is to create partnerships with organizations that will benefit Kent County veterans through easier access to housing, employment, transportation, and healthcare resources. We were able to initiate partnerships with Michigan Works, Jacob Moss here. We have some Veterans Employment Service representative from Michigan Works who comes to our office one day a week to provide assistance to veterans with resume, job search, and things like that. We also initiated a partnership with Volunteers of America in terms of employment, so they have one of their employment, veteran employment representatives who is available one day a week in our office as well. Another partnership we created internally in 2016, Housing and Community Development, through the HUD-VASH program. We were able to attend some of their orientations and streamline the process for some of those veterans who awarded HUD-VASH vouchers to access security deposits to make their transition from homelessness into having a house much easier and simple for them. So, we're really proud of that partnership. Our other strategic goal is to ensure that our staff is well-trained and provide personalized services while being proactively engaged in the department's mission, vision, and goals. So, we ensured that all of our Veteran Services representatives received their 16 continuing education units in 2016 that's required to maintain their accreditation. In addition, we brought our whole staff to our fall conference where they receive valuable information and updates regarding federal veterans' benefits, state updates, and it just allows them to information when they intercept veterans who come to us for services. Another thing that we did was we ensured, well, we provided through a partnership with MSU Extension Campus, we had all of our staff attend a training, and we all received certification as mental health first aid providers now. Dealing with the population that we deal with, I felt it was important for my staff to understand maybe some of the mental issues that our clients may be dealing with and how to recognize those and what to do going forward. So, that was one of the ways we met that strategic goal. Our significant accomplishments, we created efficiencies in our processes and procedures, which allowed our Veteran Service Representatives to see more clients while simultaneously being able to generate more work. And then, we also completed our eight-year plan. It was a long process, but we finally got that done in 2016, and it really allows our department to provide long-term liability, or excuse me, viability while continuing to meet the emerging needs of the veterans within Kent County. So, with that, I will open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions for Carrie today? Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes. This isn't really a question for you, Carrie, but maybe you have an idea. The enhanced driver's license with the veterans on the bottom?
Yes.
I know a lot of veterans don't know about that, and I know it's a Secretary of State Office issue, but I wonder if there's a way that we can better inform the veterans of that, or you could follow up on that? I just know a lot of them don't know about it.
Yeah. They don't, but I, I will, I just had to renew my driver's license, and they asked me if I was a veteran and if I wanted that. So, I think they're doing a better job on actually engaging people who they may think are veterans. But we also, through our office, provide Kent County veteran IDs. A veteran can bring in their DD-214, and for $10, we will make them a Kent County veteran ID card, and it's great for discounts within the community. There are so many restaurants and businesses in Kent County that provide discounts for veterans. One of the biggest discount I've seen was Ucello's gives 20% discount for veterans, so FYI. It's, they do a good job, so, but I will...
I thank you for your good work. I've been in your office several times, as you know, and you and your staff are doing just a great job, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vaughn? Commissioner Kornick?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Carrie, again, for the work that you do with the Veteran Services. I think your department has a great impact on our community. With that, in 2014, we passed the Veterans Milage, and you received a substantial amount of money. Can you maybe give us an idea of how that's impacting our community, maybe an example of a new service that's available now that wasn't available yet? Milage would pass.
Well, as I said earlier, we, while we have a beautiful new office location, we're able to see more veterans, we have more visibility, we're able to engage in more partnerships because of that. You know, we now provide, you know, the veterans' ID cards, we're providing help with our claims. Just in general, we're able to provide services. We have more staff available to answer more questions. So, one thing I forgot to mention in my update was, to date cumulatively, we've brought in $30,380,370 into Kent County through federal benefits. So, that's, for every dollar we've spent, we've brought in seven into the community. So, it's thanks to that milage.
So, then, follow-up, do you see a time where you won't have enough money, you'll need additional funding, continue increasing the impact with the number of veterans in our county? I assume they're increasing all the time?
Well, actually, if you look at the GDX report, the veteran population is decreasing.
It is?
And I, it, I don't know how long that will last. It's, you know, because our World War II veterans are dying off, and actually, our Vietnam veterans are dying off at a pretty fast rate because of, you know, the issues that they have to deal with because of Agent Orange. So, you know, we're still actively engaged in a war right now. And it's been, most people don't know this, but it started in 1990, the Gulf War, and it has not ended. It led into the Iraq War and the Afghanistan War. So, we're talking about that whole group of veterans who, you know, in the future will need to engage our services. So, I don't see the need decreasing or going away anytime soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dick?
Thank you. Good morning. I noticed in the penetration rate report, it's about 10%, and you targeted to go up to 20%. What constitutes a, an event that qualifies as penetration, the actual provision of service, or somebody walks in? What is it?
It's our face-to-face contact with those veterans where we're able to sit down and explain their benefits to them or to their surviving spouses. The way we calculate our penetration report is we take the number of veterans on the GDX and we times it by two, it's the industry, and are divided by the number of veterans that we've served, so...
So, if you wanted to know how many people, how many veterans are aware of it, you've had at least incidental contact through media or whatever, that would be substantially greater than your number of penetration?
Correct. Correct. We don't count our phone contacts, we only count our face-to-face contacts.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
All right. Great work, Carrie. Just one quick thing, because I just want to be able to share this. You had said dollar, is it, for every dollar the county spends on Veteran Services, we bring in seven?
Correct.
Okay. And the $30 million is the cumulative of, since the department started?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much for everything you do. Appreciate it. All right. Onto item six, Community Development Housing Commission Modification of Contract with Grand Rapids to Recognize the County of Kent as the Community Action Agency. Wayman, do you want to give us a motion for sure?
Sure. I'll read this through, and...
Motion first, or?
Sure.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Support. Commissioner Kornick, supported by Commissioner Vaughn. Wayman.
Okay. This is a request to modify the Municipal Partnership Act contract with the City of Grand Rapids to recognize the County of Kent as the Community Action Agency that serves Kent County and to authorize the board chair or desk to sign the contract. In September 2015, the County of Kent and the City of Grand Rapids entered into the Municipal Partnership Act to permit Area Community Services and Training Agency, the asset organization, to continue acting as a CEA that serves Kent County for the purpose of serving as a primary advocate for the reduction of causes, conditions, and effects of poverty and promoting social and economic opportunities that foster self-sufficiency for low-income persons. In March 2017, the Board of Commissioners authorized staff to proceed with necessary steps for the county to be designated as a CEA and present necessary requests for approvals for CAA assets and programs to the county. The proposed Municipal Partnership Act changes are as follows. One, it identifies the county as a CAA for Kent County, it clarifies the financial commitments of each municipality, and identifies three seats for Kent County Commissioners and two seats for Grand Rapids City Commissioners as members of the 15-member Tri-Partsite Governing Advisory Committee. The Grand Rapids City Commission will consider the proposed changes to the Municipal Partnership Act on August of 15th, 2017, and the proposed Municipal Contract, Partnership Act contract has been reviewed and approved as informed by Assistant Corporate Counsel.
All right. Thank you, Wayman. Are there any questions on this, or we can bring up Jacob if needed? Otherwise, we can... Commissioner Dick?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. And thank you for the, the new document that was sent out. I, that's one of my questions, because I thought maybe I could take some meetings off my agenda, but...
We thought so, too. That was our attempt. They didn't want it.
But, as it may, I'm still looking at the, at the new document that was sent out. The Advisory Governing Board, that's section B2, 7B2, still designates two, a minimum of two city commissioners from Grand Rapids.
No minimum requirement for Kent County participation on advisory board?
There's three.
Well, that's the governing board. I'm talking about the Advisory Governing Board.
It's the same. It is three. We simply wanted to make sure that the City of Grand Rapids understood in this new arrangement what the number they would be allowed to participate with. That's why we clarified that in the agreement. There has been concern about the number of representatives that they would have available to, to be a part of the governing body, so we wanted that was clear in the agreement.
And again, there's, there's the governing body, and then there's the advisory governing body, and there's the two different bodies. Governing body, the states will have three, Kent County Commissioners, two city commissioners...
The same.
The advisory governing body says it'll have two Grand Rapids Commissioners. It says nothing about Kent, but it's implied or assumed it's going to be three.
It'll be three.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Kornick?
Are we going to have any problems with Grand Rapids passing this in act of August of 15th?
Don't believe so. We've been meeting with, talking with the city manager and the team for about a month now regarding this agreement, and the mayor also met with us a few weeks back, and there doesn't seem to be any opposition. There are several commissioners that, of course, serve on the advisory council and the board. There seems to be support for this, has been. Maybe Jacob can expound on it, but the feeling that we have is that they're ready to move forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. For those of you who don't know me, Jacob Moss. I currently get the privilege to serve as CEO for Area Community Services Employment and Training Council. I did not name it back in 1985. We typically call them Community Action Programs and Michigan Works Programs. You know, Commissioner Lanier and Commissioner Allen both serve on our, on our governing board. They're aware that we're moving in this direction. I think it'll help facilitate that dialogue. I plan on attending both of the meetings. I think the committee, the whole meeting is, probably is next week or maybe in two weeks, and then, and then the meeting at night as well to answer any questions. weeks, and then, and then the meeting at night as well, to answer any questions or concern that they may have. But I believe that from conversations that Wayman and Greg have been having, and frankly, the amount of work that we've done over the last two years has put it in a good position to continue to move forward with the October 1st as the transition date.
So then, who are our three members currently?
Our current Commissioners are Commissioner Steck, Commissioner Mast, and then Commissioner Womack.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to add, if I can just say thank you to Wayman and Matthew, you know, Tom Dempsey did some heavy lifting over the years, and Linda's kind of jumped right into, Linda's like fueled by fire, or maybe drinking from a water hose, I mean, a fire hose at this point, but, you know, it's very complex when you, when you look at the number of acts that kind of create these organizations and these structures, and I think it's been well thought out, well, it'd be a good, good situation to serve the Kent County residents better. Thank you.
Are we all set? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on to item seven, miscellaneous, Commissioner miscellaneous, do we have any today? Commissioner Vonck?
Again, I'm sort of active this morning. Let's just, I'll then express. I have a question for Wayman. A few years ago, we did a study on the demographics of our employment within the, and the Veteran Services presentation sort of woke me up. How are we doing versus veterans if that should be a measure as well within the county and how well we're doing with that, and even active veterans, which would be Army Reserve or National Guard? And I'd like to know what, how we're doing on that level as well. So I think that'd be another measurement that probably Human Resources could take a look at.
Sure, we could do that. I'm sure Carrie has the statistics, and we, we could work our two, see if we could embody them with information and support that. That's not a bad idea.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dick.
Thank you, Chair. Just a little update on 298, we've already talked a little bit about the 298 process, that is the process set by the state for identifying and moving forward with pilots to integrate care between mental health and physical health. Network 180 is continuing to press ahead as the designated public project for purpose identifying how we can best integrate those two worlds. It is, it's a challenging and really intriguing process, and so it's exciting for Network 180, it's exciting for all of us that are involved in that. But it is moving ahead. We talked a little bit about some of the wrinkles, including what may happen to the three or four private projects that the state is also mandated to press forward. Whether those stall components of it or not, Network 20 intends to proceed with its process. At the same time, the regional PIHP, the LRE, has its own set of challenges, and we'll be talking more about that, but we've met with, with Wayman and staff about some of the, some of the financial challenges that the LRE is going to face this year due to a number of revenue issues that are really statewide, that are affecting this region, particularly in a significant way, and, and coming out of the problems from last couple of years. So those challenges are looming. We hope that that will not have an impact on, on the county that is a financial impact, but it potentially could, and so we'll continue to watch that carefully and come back and work with you on that.
Commissioner Steck, for all your work on that, I know it's a lot. Any other Commissioner miscellaneous today? All right, our next meeting is September 12th, and we are adjourned.
These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique, it is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful, and you can see it, you can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering Veteran Services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our County Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind-the-scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the City of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners, and they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.